2021. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded on YouTube. Written advance notice of this meeting was provided at least forty-eight hours ago. Such notice provided the time, date, and location of this meeting, and included the agenda to the extent it was known at the time. Notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with law. Minutes of this meeting are being kept by the Board Secretary and will be made available promptly to any member of the public requesting them from Board Secretary at twenty-five A Leshen Lane, Heitstone, New Jersey. Minutes will be provided at cost and in accordance with board policy. Are there any board members present who leave this meeting to be in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act? There being none, we may proceed. In compliance with the fire code of the state of New Jersey, call your attention to the emergency exits for this room, which are located behind the audience and to my right and left. Item one B, pledge allegiance. Item one C, motion for the agenda, please.
Having read the materials received, I move the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board, please.
One second, sir, sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, what's going on? Oh, I'm sorry. Having a little technical glitch, one second, please. Okay, there we go. Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes.
Yes.
Ms. Bruggeoli.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Laberty.
Yes. Item one D.
It is resolved that the East Windsor Regional School District may hold two closed sessions at this meeting on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. These closed sessions concern personnel, HIB report of October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Minutes of these closed sessions will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Any questions? Call the board, please.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yeah.
Mr. Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes.
Yes.
Ms. Bruggeoli.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Laberty.
Yes. Thank you. Item two is the student representative report.
Good evening. I'm going to introduce our student representatives, Gabby and Anissa.
Good evening. I'm Gabby Streppich, and I'm excited to be providing you all with another report tonight.
Good evening. I'm Anissa Singh, and we are both very glad to be giving another report tonight. We hope that our report tonight finds you and your family in good health.
Continuing through the school year, we continue to take caution in every event we plan in all considerations of COVID-19. Since our last meeting on Monday, October eleventh, as a school, we have been preparing for the high school's homecoming football game. In preparation of this, student council organized a spirit week for the week of the eighteenth, in which every student and staff member were able to participate to get excited for the game. This year, our spirit days consisted of twin day slash dynamic duo day, neon day, country versus country club, science decade day, and herd you apparel day.
As many of you know, each year, the high school organizes a school-wide pep rally, which is held on Friday of the homecoming football game during school hours. Each grade has been preparing for the pep rally, especially the limsick, in hopes to win against the other grades. And after lots of meetings and ideas, it was decided that we would continue spirit week through this week, the twenty-fifth, as well as hold the pep rally Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, directly after school. This event would remain completely optional for students who wish to go home or leave and assist students in need of transportation with late buses.
Since many sports teams are still in the middle of their season with MCTs and states, the pep rally will be from two-thirty to four, allowing sports teams to still have time to meet and practice with their team. As teams start to wrap up their seasons, we would like to congratulate all of the fall athletes on a great season.
Thank you for listening to our report tonight, and I hope all this information was useful to you and your family.
Thank you. Item three, presentations, district performance data.
Yeah, each year, the district is often required to provide an overview of its performance data regarding student progress. Typically, we use the state assessment data to kind of use as the anchor for this. In the spring, we had a, I'm not going to call it a waiver, but we were permitted to not administer the NJSLA. And instead, we, as a state, use the Start Strong assessments. As a school district, we also provide feedback and guidance based on our district data to gain a sense of where we are. Obviously, this year is a slightly unique experience, obviously because our students are coming out of inconsistent educational experiences for the past eighteen months. So for us this year is an opportunity to get a sense of where our students right now as we begin and return to in-person learning at the beginning of the two thousand twenty-one school year, and obviously getting a sense of where our students as it relates to learning loss based on the pandemic, and then what do we need to consider as it relates to programming for them for this school year. So with that said, I'm going to turn things over to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Assessment, Ms. Sandy Small.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure if you can see this before, or if you don't. So, can I, well, are the girls of you who know me, know I'd like to move around? So I'm going to do everything, everything I can here. So, Mark, talk a little bit about the state assessment. And I'm not sure if you have control of the screen or whatever.
Yeah, we, yeah.
So, part of the state assessment that was a waiver for last year is what they called the Start Strong assessment. And instead of taking it last year because there were so many students who were staying at home or were hybrid, the state allowed us to take it in October. So that's some of what we're going to deal with today. But then, those of you who have been around, you also know that we have our internal data, that we have years' worth of growth to be able to compare. So that's what we're going to do a little bit tonight. So just to make sure that everybody knows where we're headed for tonight, what we're going to be looking at is the overview of what Start Strong is. What does the test look like? The biggest thing to remember for tonight is what I'm sharing tonight is preliminary data only, and it's relating all of the students in the district who took this. We will not have the comparisons to the state till mid-December. So this is everything about what our students did. Thanks, Paul. Next thing, Dave Rowe is going to talk about the DLM data that was from last year. Then we're going to compare the Renaissance with the Star Reading and Star Math, which is what you're accustomed to us doing. Then we're going to go through and we're going to talk about now what? You know the data, what are we doing with it? So as we started with the Start Strong, this was the waiver that was given to the state as we just discussed, talking about what and what content and what grades were being tested. The state decided ELA in grades four through ten, and then math four through eight, algebra one, and geometry. Science would also be tested in the grade levels the year above, in six, nine, and twelve. Typically, it would have been the prior year. So this assessment was testing standards from the prior year. So sixth-grade students were being tested on fifth-grade standards. Just, and that's important to understand as I continue on this. The one thing the state made sure is do not use this in lieu of your district assessments because we would have the longitudinal data. The next important thing about the Start Strong is the number of questions that were tested. So in ELA, grades four through ten, there were ten questions only. In math, they ranged from twenty to twenty-three questions, depending on the grade level. And algebra and geometry were twenty-three and twenty-four questions. Science was twenty-five and twenty-four questions. So that was the basis of the assessment. What they tried to do is they tried to make sure that the assessment could be given in a one-period or forty-five to sixty-minute period so that it wasn't taking the typical time that the state did. So what the prelim data tells us, I'm going to break this down in ELA and in math. So the total population that was given here, if you notice this data, we're going to be going through GNR, PLD, and then the total for grade four and then grade five. So if you're looking at this data, what this is telling us that fifty-five percent of our current fourth-grade students may not have mastered third-grade standards. And for those of you who recall when I talked about our curriculum updates, we took that into effect when we were going through doing revisions. And with the revisions, we took the last two years of standards, skills, and knowledge, and made sure we embedded it into the current curriculum. So we had this already in our workings. For fifth-grade ELA, a little bit different story. This one's telling us that fifty percent of our current fifth-grade students will not need as much as much intensive support. But then that leaves the question, what do we do at both ends? Fifty percent need some support, fifty percent don't need as much. This comes to our expectations that we're differentiating for students, and this is what's really key within our curriculum documents this year. When we come into math, fourth grade doesn't look so good. Fifth grade doesn't look so good. What we're noticing, then I'm going to tell you for both the Start Strong as well as our internal data, math took a bigger hit with the pandemic than the ELA overall. That's not surprising because our students, and you'll know your own kids, did a lot of reading on their own. Sometimes it's a little bit more difficult to do math on your own, if you will. So, just what we talked about here, the standards the prior year were a little bit of a struggle, and we've got to make sure we're going to close that gap. In six, seven, eight, we're going to see ELA, sixth grade, a little bit behind when they normally are. Eighth grade's looking pretty decent. Fifty percent are with it, and the other fifty percent need some supports. In math, this is where we've got to be careful. If you remember our math program in the middle school, sixth grade, every sixth-grade student took that same exact assessment, and that includes our double-accelerated kids. Were in less support some, and I'm sorry, I did not tell you about the support system that they did. So their less support is talking that our students who may need supports because they didn't have that in-person instruction, but will not need the intensive support. The strong support means these kids are further behind than we had anticipated. So that's how they're looking at that. So what you're going to see in our sixth-grade math, even our pre-algebra students took a hit. And that's where we're going to have to get some supports in here to make sure that we can continue to build that program. Our seventh and eighth grade, this is excluding our algebra and geometry students because they took a different test. So that's not, eighth grade here is representing about fifty percent of our students, and seventh is representing about seventy-five percent of the students. Then science, what this is telling us, if all the things are equal, is that our standards in grades three to five for science haven't really been mastered. And we can easily go through and find out what the exact standards are and work through them. Then we come up with the middle school advanced math. And the assessment that was given was the algebra and geometry. When I first looked at this, I was extremely alarmed. So I had to go back and do some research because when I look and I see in seventh grade, our double-accelerated students, only twelve percent need less support, and our geometry students, only forty-two percent are in the higher range, I was a little bit in a panic. Then what I realized happened is when the state was doing, giving the strong assessment to our students, every student in algebra, regardless of what grade they were in, took the end-of-the-year eighth-grade assessment. And I was like, oh, makes sense. So this data here is not indicative of what our students know in the grade that they're sitting in. So that took a little bit of time for me to understand. So it's important that you understand that, that we're not in a panic about that group yet. Okay? We go into high school. High school, I have to break out a little bit differently than the others because in high school, we have honors, academic, and standard-level classes. So our ninth and tenth grade ELA looks pretty good. Fifty-four, fifty-four percent of our students are testing as needing little support in ninth and tenth grade for ELA. And the algebra and geometry doesn't look so good. But if you recall, those students who are taking algebra in high school traditionally have not done well because that's the fifty percent of our students who may have struggled and are taking algebra for the first time. Almost fifty percent of our students took algebra one in seventh or eighth grade. So that excludes most of them in here. And we only have ninth and tenth graders that were tested. So wherever you have the algebra two, our juniors and seniors were not tested on this. Science, nine and twelve, very similar to sixth grade, looks a little bit weaker than we had anticipated in what we normally do in the state assessments. So what I'm going to, Dave Rowe is going to come up and talk to us about the dynamic learning map. Then I'm going to come back and I'm going to talk about our star assessments, where we were three years ago and where we are now. That gives us a little bit better of a comparison to know what supports we need to give our students.
Good evening, everybody. Whereas we have thousands of students in districts who take the NJSLA, the Start Strong, and Renaissance, Dynamic Learning Maps is reserved for a small sliver of our special education students. Less than one percent of students in district take this assessment, but it is a reporting requirement. So we'll go through the data quickly. The Dynamic Learning Maps is the alternative to the NJSLA, and we did administer it in the spring. The majority of our students were in district. In years past, typically between thirty and forty students take this assessment in district as opposed to the NJSLA. Last year, we had about twenty-seven or twenty-eight students take the assessment. Keep in mind that our students with more severe disabilities, and we're talking about students with developmental delays or intellectual impairments, were in district for the majority of the year. We had them in September through June with a brief pause. And Mrs. Thomasello helped administer the assessment last year under very difficult circumstances, so I thank her for that. Participation guidelines, it's not driven by program, or it's not driven by disability. It's driven by the IEP team, which the parents are part of. And the IEP team has to answer some questions. One is, does the student have a disability that severely or significantly impacts intellectual functioning? Is the student's disability going to impact their post-school outcomes? Will the student, does the student use substantially adapted materials, such as the curriculum, and individualized methods to access information? So again, these are students typically in our multiple-disabled classrooms and our autism classrooms. They're, they assess, whereas the NJSLA will assess the New Jersey State Learning Standards, the DLM uses the essential elements, which you can see a blast from the past. They are based off the Common Core state standards. When New Jersey updated and moved away from the Common Core, they did not update the essential elements. Those still stay in place. Those were nationally adopted, and that's what the states are still using for the alternative assessment. And then you can see the example of the standards. And again, we're past the Common Core, but there's still strong similarities between the student learning standards and the Common Core. And if everybody can see that, you can see what the standard is for a student who does not have a disability or who has a disability but can still participate in the NJSLA versus a student on the right who has a more significant disability. You can see the goals are aligned, but they're much more appropriate based on the student's strengths and weaknesses. They can be scored either as emerging, approaching the target, at target, or advanced, four different levels, and they're described here in the slideshow that everybody will receive. And then you can see the breakdown of our students. Again, we had twenty-eight students take the assessment in English and twenty-seven in math. You had to be present. It's not something you could do virtually last year. And I think we had approximately thirty-three or thirty-four students who would have been eligible to take the test. So again, we had the majority of our students in, taking the DLM in district. And you can see the breakdown of scores. And that is it for the DLM. I'll pass the microphone back to Ms. Small, who will talk about Renaissance.
Okay, so we looked a little bit about the state data of what they gave us. And now we're going to delve a little bit deeper into the Renaissance data, which is the district data that we have been using for years. If I was going to use every piece of data we have, we would be here until tomorrow morning. So what I had to go through is I looked at only the transitional years. So we looked at, so what I'm going to talk to you tonight about is the third-grade data that we're seeing, the sixth grade, and then the high school. So that everything that I, I'm going to show you, we could tell you for every grade level, but in order just to be able to show you a glimpse, we're going to just do it for three, six, and high school. So if we look over the years, so if you look at that little link that's there, grade three data, you'll be able to use that link to be able to see where I got all of my facts from, but I can't necessarily display everything here. Okay? So when I go through and I pull up the IRL or the instructional reading level, that is what we're talking about, whether or not a student is on level or not. So if a student is in third grade and taking the test, the STAR test, in September, they're roughly, roughly their grade should be a three-point-one if they are on level. Anything below or above would be telling us that they're above level within a year or below level. So the data you see on the left is where we were for this year for those third-grade students for September two thousand twenty-one. And this is the total population. If you clicked on that link, you will see that broken down to general population, ELL, and special ed. So some of those facts are going to come from that sheet. The data on the right is from September two thousand eighteen. And I chose two thousand eighteen rather than two thousand nineteen because when I come back and do this in January and again in June, I won't have end-of-the-year data for two thousand nineteen because we started in the remote world then. And that's why I chose this year. So what we see here is if you look in September of two thousand twenty-one, our IRL for our average third-grade students is a one-point-nine. Traditionally, or back three years ago, four years ago, it was a two-point-six. So we were just slightly below as total population as third-graders. We're now quite below. Now, if you go back and you look at the documents, you'll see where we are for gen ed as well. So if you look at the average total population, we've dropped more than a half a year. But more so than the IRL, if you look at the number of students who are at or above level, that has dropped also in the last three and four years. Now, I put five to eight percent fewer students because I also looked at the data from two thousand nineteen. So I wanted to see was two thousand eighteen an outlier? If you noticed that the one-point-nine and the two-point-six, that's where we're coming up. So basically, we're seven months behind where we were typically. If you look at the gen ed, the IRL changed very little. But in the special ed and ELL world, that has dropped dramatically. We're more than a year behind from where we were three years ago with those populations. The one thing we have to remember, and I brought it up when we were talking about Start Strong, we do have students, if you're looking, that are still at or above level. And when we're instructing in our classrooms, we can't forget about those kids. So we have to make sure that we're meeting our students where they are and not where the majority are in order to have them continue to grow. Now, we look at math, again, on the left is for this past year, and on the right is in two thousand eighteen. You're going to go through and see, in this case, we tell mostly with scale score. So you're going to see the scale score drop in the total population an average of fifty points between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-one. That's a decrease in about a half year of readiness, which really mirrors a lot of what the Start Strong data told us. The general population went from a seventy-two to seventy-four percent below, but we're now at an eighty-one percent. So our general population has lost ground. And then I have our data for our special ed and ELL, which also is losing ground, just like it did, those two groups did with ELA. Is it okay if I hold any questions till the end? Because I know sometimes you might have some questions in between for the grade levels. So if I go to sixth grade, again, I have the two thousand twenty-one for September as well as the two thousand eighteen. You're going to see this year, our average IRL was a five-point-one, and four years ago, it was a five-point-seven. So again, continuing that trend, total population, we've lost about a half year through the pandemic. And again, if you always notice, I'm going to say typical because taking every student, we're going to see different stories. When we go through and look at our total population for the number of students that are more than one year below, three and four years ago, we were at forty-five percent. This year's data is telling us we're at sixty percent. So we do have a heavy lift to go through trying to bring these students to what we're calling accelerated growth. Math, again, comparing September two thousand twenty-one to September two thousand eighteen. You're going to see a drop in the scale score from a seven-oh-eight to a six-sixty-seven as an overall with the total population. And then you also looked at the number of students below level went from a thirty-one percent to a forty-seven percent. So that's a great drop for us. And the number of students at or above level went from a forty percent to a twenty-six percent. So we're losing at both ends. It's not just that all of a sudden they're merging in the middle. We're losing at both ends. Then I wanted to go into our pre-algebra. Say, okay, the sixth grade, I took out those pre-algebra kids. Let me see what's going on with them because maybe that's going to tell us a different story. When I look at this data, I'm like, that's great. We have zero that are below level in both this year as well as in two thousand eighteen. What you're going to notice is the scale score has dropped. And what you won't notice on this slide, but you will notice on the pages that I shared with you, is right now, we have forty-six students in pre-algebra. That is the lowest number of students we've had in sixth-grade pre-algebra in over ten years. What it tells us, the students that are in there are ready. But if we don't do something to fill these gaps, that double-accelerated program that we worked so hard to build will decrease. So the math people and math teachers in sixth grade have a heavy task. Not only do they have to build the skills, they have to make sure those students who would typically go in those advanced programs have the opportunities to go into those advanced programs. So that's all I have on that one. High school over the years, this becomes a little bit more burdensome to look at. So as you're looking through this, you're like, what am I looking at? So if we're looking at the academic level, which is our on-level students, you look at your honors students, which are the students who are typically showing us greater readiness, and our standard students, our students who need some additional supports. You're going to see across the board here, the instructional reading level has decreased. So if we look at honors, typically, those students are coming to us with a year above-level IRL at that ten-point-eight, a year and a half. This year, they're coming to us with a nine-point-eight average. So though that's good news that they're still above level, they're not as above as they were. But we will be able to accelerate that growth provided we give them some of that learning that has been missed or not mastered. If you look at the academic, you'll see that also goes from thirty percent at or above IRL to an eighteen percent. And then the IRL there goes at seven-point-eight to a seven-point-one as well. Math over the years, this is the algebra for the ninth grade. And this goes again, this is only about fifty percent of our ninth-grade population. And you'll see that this looks comparable to what it was several years back. I also wanted to add in here algebra two and geometry because the algebra one didn't cover all of our students. So if you go back and you look at our total algebra two, we had an 849, we have an 832. That's not so big of a jump. And we have 39 percent of our students were at or above level. And I apologize, that should not say IRL. That should say at or above level. And the current algebra two is 26 percent. Geometry, we dropped from a 20 percent at or above level to down to a 6 percent. And they would traditionally be our students who might not have been in our high school until this year. So they're our sophomores and sometimes our juniors. So that's the data in a nutshell, even though some of you are going to say, well, that wasn't a nutshell. For those of you who know about going into every year, you would see it was much longer. Some of the questions now come, so what? We know this. What are we going to do about it? And that's where the hard work comes, and that's what we have to attack. So when we go through looking at this, and any of the supervisors, administrators in the audience, if there's anything you want to add to what I'm doing, feel free to join us because this is what everyone is doing to help support this. This is not just Sandy. This is what the buildings and what the supervisors have to be doing to help support our teachers. So the very first thing that we did is we did the major curriculum revisions throughout the summer. And every one of those documents covers the standards, skills, and knowledge, content knowledge of what should have been mastered the year prior and the year prior to that. So for example, if I am an algebra one student in high school, my curriculum document has information there that teachers need from eighth grade math and seventh grade math so that we can figure out what our starting points are for every student in front of us. And you're going to know that the students are not all starting at the same point. So where are they? And that's where we talk here about the prior knowledge, skills, and standards. The next thing that we are working hard on this year is to ensure that the grade books are really reflective of what the progress the students are making in the content. So we're working very diligently with the buildings so that the supervisors and the building administrators are speaking the same language when we're talking to teachers, that just because Johnny is such a nice kid, it shouldn't be reflective in his grade book. That can be a comment that we do, that we go through and put in there. But because Mary is a pain in the neck, that shouldn't be reflective there either. If either of them have strengths or needs of improvement, we should be able to tell parents what that grade represents. An A should be an A. A 90 should be a 90. So we are working really hard to make sure that we're standing across the board on that. Next topic comes to how are we doing with SGOs? And for those of you who say, okay, I have that acronym, but I don't know what it means, these are our student growth objectives, and this is what every one of our teachers has to create. It's sort of like their goal for the year with their students. So we have been working very hard with the teachers to ensure that they are doing what we're going to call reach goals, that just because our students are coming to us at a different level than they typically would, we do not want to accept a lower endpoint for our students. Because if we say they will only get typical growth, which is that year's growth, then we're going to keep our students behind year after year after year. So this is a little scary for teachers because you look at it, if you're in the classroom, you're saying, but this student's coming to me a year and a half behind. How am I ever going to gather that? Well, we're going to try and give strategies, go in, support, model, and do everything we can to help support that student because ultimately, our job is to make sure our students are leaving our district with the skills necessary for success in college and careers. So that is our goal that we're going to go through doing. This is some of the stuff that we are working through currently with the SGOs, making sure that whatever we are doing with our students and our teachers, we are expecting accelerated growth so that we can move our students forward so this pandemic doesn't hold them back any further than it has to. Anything that I said resonate with you? Anything that you're like, holy cow, Sandy, I need this re-explained? Anything that you're going through there? But you need questions from us?
Nice, I have a question. I think everyone around the country, even world, has expected a decrease in, or learning loss. But how does what the data found compare to what we might have expected from it?
So it's funny, Colleen, you say, so you actually use the term learning loss. And if you notice, I tried so hard not to use that because for some reason, people are thinking that if we use the term learning loss, it's okay to say kids can't succeed. So that's why I've tried to keep that out of my vocab. So what we're trying to say is students haven't, are not on the typical level. So did we anticipate some things? Yes, I can't say that we expected what we're seeing right now because it's never happened. We've never gone in this. But we at least knew something was not going to be up to par, so we put some plans in. So what I will share with you is that what we have said to teachers, we want some really strong accelerated growth goals for our teachers, but we don't want to be so unrealistic that we're going to have teachers fail and students fail. So we're going to reassess in February when the teachers can. So we're not sure where we are in comparison to anyone else. And I'd love to say when the strong data comes in in December, we might have a better clue. I don't want to hang my hat on that data because it's so limited. So what I really want to look at when we test again in December and January, in February, I could tell you, are we on track for that accelerated growth that we're hoping for? And we really do believe that with the support of everybody, our teachers can do all they can to help our students grow.
Thank you. Onto my next question about timeline.
I looked over there at you notes.
I have a question. Has, have the teachers seen this data yet? Or has it just been shared with the administrators? Or are you having like, how are you presenting it to the teachers?
So there's a couple of things, Nicole. So every administrator, we walk through all of this data with. Some of the administrators have already started working with, whether it's their content or whether it's their buildings to give an overview, and some are still working through to create these meetings. So we are back to, if you recall, we started data teams a couple of years ago, and with the pandemic, we have not gone back to it. That's one of the strategies that we're going through to make sure that we have building data teams who would then go back with their lead teachers to be able to help support the teachers in their building with understanding this data and what we're going to do moving forward. So there are some buildings that are a little bit further ahead than others with sharing this out.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that it's presented to the teachers. And I don't know if you could say positive. I just, I mean, like Colleen said, I don't think the loss or the decline was, you know, shocking to anyone, but still, I mean, to have this presented to teachers, I would think that it would be, I mean, they go through so much and they're so stressed and everything as it is with the year starting. I just, you know, just as long as they know that they're being supported and everything's being explained to them fully.
And that has absolutely been brought forth, that the support is there because we're all in this together. It's new. We're trying to find a pathway that leads to success for all.
Quick question, and it's not about numbers. It's more like, you keep on saying that we're going to catch up to students with their skills and everything. So catch up implies spending more time or having more homework or what's the generic, the general like framework for?
Okay, so because we don't have more time?
Yeah.
What we're trying to make sure that we're doing is trying to embed. So if we're going to be teaching a skill or strategy, to scaffold that skill or strategy, not to go back and teach seventh grade math, then eighth grade math, now let me get to what I really have to do. It's based on the area that you're teaching at that time, teaching teachers how to scaffold each of those skills or contents rather than going back and doing the reteaching all the way through. Because you're right, unless we have additional time given, you can't do that aspect of it. So that's where we're talking, that that is what our approach is. And our approach is more than ever, that need for differentiation because we have so many unique circumstances. And that is where those times that we need to support and model for our teachers comes in at. And that's one of the things, actually, I had a meeting this afternoon with all the supervisors, and we discussed making sure that we're in there, that we're modeling, we're supporting every which way because this is a new world for everybody. And that's whether you're an experienced teacher who has 20 years' experience or a brand-new teacher. You know, one of the supervisors brought up that our new teachers are even at a deficit because they taught, they did their student teaching from their living room. They didn't even have the opportunity to get in front of kids and to be able to get through some of those initial things. So it's all a learning curve for everyone.
So I'm looking at the data here, and for science, I don't see any data for seventh and eighth grades.
The only science that was tested would be what is typically tested in the years that we actually do the NJSLA would be, we usually test fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. So they only tested the year above, which would be your six, nine, and 12. So that is the only data that, only a test that happens in science in a typical year. And so therefore, those are the standards that were assessed this past year. Okay?
And on the math, we know, I mean, it's probably, you know, you've answered the question, but what exactly are we doing while you're saying, you know, the teachers are all in, we're all in this together? What exactly are we doing from an intervention perspective?
From a what perspective? I'm sorry.
For intervention to bring the math?
Okay, so that's where it comes down to that in our, I'm going to tell you a little bit, but because each level's going to be a little bit different. In our three-five, they're doing what they're calling tier one, two, and three interventions that typically students will be pulled out, they're going to be pushing in, teacher's going to be responsible for doing it in their small groups rather than having those kids removed. So we will, we're trying to implement a lot of different strategies for the whole group rather than that small group. So that's some of the things that are happening in three-five. And anybody want to help me with six-twelve? If not, I can continue. Totally up to you, Brittany. I want to hear from somebody other than me.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brittany. I'm the math supervisor for six through 12. Lucky me now. So we're really excited about all the initiatives that we started. So first off, by getting a new textbook, I'll talk about what we're doing for all. So getting those new textbooks, we knew that we needed to increase the rigor. We knew that we needed to, I also do STEM, but math can't be taught in isolation, right? So we want to make sure that we found a core resource that had that same mentality, and we think we really did. And then, like Sandy mentioned, the work over the summer was huge. So we really were, each curriculum has a set, if you go into the documents, where it's two years back of what the learning, either the gaps or what we had, we had teachers do like serious audits of what skills, specific skills, so we could speak to, this was covered, this was only covered a little bit, this was exposure, or we didn't get to it. So that was really important so that we could, when we get to that unit, we know that this needs to be scaffolded down. And like you said, there are students who don't have that learning loss, so we are prepared for that as well. Sandy started mentioning those, the different tiers. So that's what also is coming. We have, I don't know if I can speak to that, but we have some ideas of possibilities for after-school programs, and we would target specific students, specific skills. Hopefully, on maybe a weekend, we might have some opportunities for a Saturday Academy to also work with those students that Sandy was discussing that didn't meet that double accelerated or single accelerated, but we know they have the potential, those readiness indicators, we're hoping to work with them. And then we do have some classes, language arts and math, that have, in middle school, that have a second teacher. So it's different programs that we've been running in years prior, but we are using that approach as well. Did that help you?
What's that? So I just want to talk a little bit about something at the high school that was successful pre-COVID, and I think it really did, it caused a little bit of loss for our students. And it's the in-person tutoring and support that students can receive during the course of the day and then after school. So we're trying to run a normal bell schedule with resource rooms fully staffed during the day so students can go get that in-person support, teachers can pull students from different study halls and then have that ability to meet with them. And we're also running our after-school tutoring programs. And really exciting, our National Honor Society for Math is partnering in person with the middle school to push into the middle school and provide tutoring. So I think when we emphasize the in-person connection between our staff and students, I think that we'll be able to identify and troubleshoot at really a personal level. So that's just something we're trying to work at the high school.
Can I ask a question about that, Mr. Benson?
Sure.
So I know that we've, I know that you guys have done that tutoring program. I was just curious, I know at back-to-school night, some of the teachers, and those sessions are really short, some of the teachers, especially for the freshman parents, explained, you know, resource room, or, you know, you can go to this room and there's someone there to do math or science all day. I was just curious, has that fully been explained to freshmen and how it works? And because I know that personally, I've brought it up to mine, and they just look at me like, yeah, okay, whatever. So I didn't know how that was explained. Do the teachers explain it to the students? Like if you're in algebra, is it something that's kind of pushed a little bit just in case they have, since they are in a transition and they haven't really been in a classroom, some of them since seventh grade?
That's a great question. That's a great problem. You're absolutely right. So the first thing that is done, definitely the classroom teacher in like, say, math, has explained to the students what's available. But one of the, one of the things that we've always done at the high school, we've had what we call grade level meetings, town hall meetings, where the four assistant principals, they meet with the entire grade in the auditorium. This year, with COVID protocols and not wanting to bring 400 students to the auditorium, we've really been trying to figure out how can we get that message? We see a benefit in doing a grade level, but for like the last, before COVID, we were talking about smaller sessions, really personal conversations, and actually, it's a perfect intro. For the rest of this week, the four assistant principals will be going into every English class because every student has English, and every theme of that meeting tomorrow, partnered with counselors, will be to identify opportunities for growth for each grade level. So freshmen's going to be transition, resource room, it's going to be code of conduct, it's going to be the handbook. Seniors will be graduation pathways, those events coming up. So we're tailoring that in small groups, and that is definitely a topic that will be spoken about. I think one of the things that Mr. Blunt kind of captured, he says, students need to know where to get support and guidance. They need to know where to go to get it. So that's going to be the theme for the rest of this week, and we'll emphasize how to get it. Because it's a, it's a big school, we're trying to make it smaller, but there's lots of things that kind of slip by, and that is definitely something we're going to make sure we address. Counselors have already visited those English classes, so it's now the time for the administrators to go in.
Questions on this side? Well, Ron spoke. Any other questions over here? I'm just, oh, Tina, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do you want to go first?
No.
Okay. Sandy, I have a couple, I think. Some of them were already answered. So one, if you can send us all of the data for each of the grade levels that were tested, I know it's not in here, but it'd be nice to look at that and have that information. But second, I'd like, I don't know, if we can talk at some point in the future or see some plans. I'm looking at our ELA fourth and fifth, and you know, we're seeing that the fifth grade students are not needing much support, but the fourth grade are not even testing at third grade, right? So that does speak to, you know, the learning to read and reading to learn facet of education. But in that same group, subset of students, you know, it's also the right time to be identifying students who have special needs or learning disabilities and all of that. How are we differentiating? And aside from that, in this data, I guess you did answer what we're doing, but we really need to make sure those students are getting to that level, especially out of all of our students, because fourth grade on just gets that much more difficult for them. So how do we make sure those students are meeting our goals?
That's a good question, Tina. So one of the things that I did not mention, and I wouldn't have if you hadn't asked your question, is we are looking at our basic skills program in our K5, totally different than what we have in the past, that we are making this something that would be those tiered interventions, but we're going through doing it. What does a student need at this point? but we're going through doing it, what does a student need at this point in time? Not what does a student, you know, this student who is part of a BSI is no longer that needy student in all areas. We're going to be chunking it so that we are giving the supports in the classroom. We're gonna have, sort of Brittany talked a little bit about in the middle school, that we have some push-in supports. Our BSI teachers are going to be pushing into the ELA and math classes. And math has been one of those areas in the three-five world that we really haven't done much extra support in, that we will have our BSI teachers, not we will have, we are having our BSI teachers push in the math classes now to help support in small groups with that now. So that is one of the things, and that's math and ELA, because we wanna make sure that we are not backtracking there. Regarding our ELL, um, population, as you know, we have lost a supervisor that was doing the K-five. We are trying to make sure that, we are trying to keep a status quo until our new supervisor comes in. So that is gonna be a struggle. That is a major concern for me as to whether or not we're going to lose more ground with those students. We're trying to do what we can, and all the supervisors are being really, really good, trying to make sure they're helping steer that ship. But that is an area of concern for me. Special ed, we have, um, Dave Rowe and the two special ed supervisors working in conjunction with the gen ed supervisors to make sure that we're all providing the resources for all students. And it's not, you remember, um, Tina, years ago, it was like, gen ed got this, special ed got this. We're really trying to make sure we steer the ship so that all of our students are, uh, receiving all the supports that we have to offer.
Okay.
So if that helps you.
A little bit, yeah.
And like right now, as I said, as I tried to say to Colleen, we're working, right now, we're like, sort of like building the ship as we steer it. So we're trying to work through some of these things. So I'm not gonna say, do we have all the answers right now? We don't. We're going through to do what we can that's best for kids.
Of course.
That, in our eyes, that we can see right now.
It's understandable. It's a big undertaking and, but that, that's especially in our ELA for our special ed and our, or our unidentified students and the ELLs. You know, if they're behind, it just affects them going forward every year thereafter. And it makes us harder, it makes your job harder going forward too, to help them accelerate. So, thank you.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying, as I said, trying to do every student as an individual and not as a classification, if you will, because all of their needs are unique.
No, that's good. Differentiate the learning, good.
I'm thinking about the challenge here. We've got a situation where we have some teachers, say in the area of math as an example, where we have students coming into high school, ninth grade algebra. And they could be multiple years behind in certain skills to be able to take, to understand fully what the algebra course is. The algebra teacher's gonna be expected then to be able to, using the term scaffold, I have no classroom experience, so I don't know really practically what that means. But somehow, algebra teacher's gonna know what the student was missing in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but they don't even have those teaching materials available to them to be able to bring that instruction into, for the, into the classroom for those students. So how do you?
Okay, so, um, the one thing that is, that's a little bit off, um, is that though, every teacher has access to all the materials that the students have. So if it's a math teacher, they would have access to all the materials that are two grades below, at least two grades below, if not more. But what we did to make life easier with our curriculum documents, we actually put the standards, the skills, and how to approach that in these documents. So that we did not want our teachers to have to go through looking at all these documents to try and figure it out. We put it all there nice, and maybe I can do that, um, another board meeting. Try to unpack the new curriculum and to be able to show you some of those examples of what we did. Because that's exactly what we, our fear was, is so we say that our students are behind, so what? How do I do this? I'm already trying to deal with twenty-eight kids in each of my five periods. How do I have time to do the rest of it? Which is one of the things, and Brittany brought this up when she was speaking, is that not only did we rewrite the curriculum and revise this, we did a lot of training over the summer. And we, I say, I am so proud of how many of our teachers came this, this over for PD for the summer to really get a leg up to know what they had to do for September. So I feel pretty confident that the majority of our teachers really are, um, feeling supported and know where to get these documents. I'm not gonna sit here and say to you that you're not gonna have a student who's in an algebra class that maybe needs fifth and sixth grade, that might be a struggle. But that's where a conversation has to come. Let me help you find the, uh, resources that you need to help support every student in your class. So I feel pretty confident that we've done a decent job with giving the initial resources that are needed all in one nice packaged document. I'm not gonna say that's the be-all and end-all, but that was a big part for us to be able to start working with our teachers this summer. And as I said, most of them did show up for, um, PD this summer, and that already gave them a leg up for starting in September. I don't know if that addresses what you're asking me, but.
Sure, it does. Yeah, we, I guess the idea would be, we'd want to be able to provide, uh, uh, Cliff Notes to a teacher for how to catch up an individual student who might be missing certain skill sets. Because that teacher may not be well-versed in what those, those skill sets.
Right, and that's exactly what we were worried about, which is why we did those documents. Um, and as Brittany alluded to, if you, like, when we talked about PD last year, back in February, we started this with our teachers by them looking at their current curriculum documents. Tell us what you've got to that you feel really comfortable that your students have mastered. Tell us what you've brushed over that you may have done, but you're not sure. And tell us what you haven't gotten to. Quite frankly, what haven't you gotten to? Because in the pandemic, there's some things that we didn't. So those are the things that we had to make sure that we carefully embedded in the current documents in the revisions. So that's really where we started, and then we moved ourselves forward to make sure that, even if there were areas that the teachers felt comfort, comfortable and confident that the students mastered, there may be other students that didn't, so we had to put some of that in there.
The other question we have is, how are we assessing the impact on the socio-emotional state of both the teachers and the students, of the additional stress of catching up in, you know, in, in areas which are normally challenging in the best of years, uh, to, to have students at grade level? How are we coping with the additional?
So I'm gonna say that's a really loaded question. And I'm gonna say that that's probably, uh, Mark, I'm gonna throw this at you because this is gonna be one of those things that it's not just necessarily about curriculum and supporting our stu, our teachers and our students within the curriculum world. It's a much bigger, um, atmosphere that we have to approach. So, Mark, I don't wanna throw it at you, but I will.
That's fine. That's why I'm here. Throw things at me. In, in terms of.
At least I tell you in advance.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, in terms of the socio-emotional needs of staff and students, that, that's an ongoing process. I talked before that, you know, one of the mechanisms we're, we're looking to do is embed, uh, socio-emotional learning within classroom settings. Obviously, teachers need the tools with which to do that. And sometimes that can feel difficult when you're kind of, I think, I don't wanna say fighting against, but competing with academic needs, right? And sometimes those socio-emotional needs may feel like it's kind of taking away from it. So, you know, there's some, some added layers that we've done within the district this year through the board support. We've added our counseling corps. Uh, we've, we've increased our partnership with our Rutgers clinicians. Uh, and we, we, we do have, um, I'm gonna call it a survey, but an assessment tool we're using to gauge where students are at the beginning of the school year as it relates to, um, the castle competencies, the socio-emotional competencies. And then we're gonna look at that and determine from a programmatic standpoint, what do we need to do from a grade level situation? Or, most importantly, what the teachers need to know about the students who are before them to determine how they can shape their learning environments. I think that you raised a, a good point for our staff, um, who I do think we need to be mindful of as it relates to the heavy lift or the perceived heavy lift. And, uh, you know, we, you know, we have a number of ongoing supports that we will provide to them throughout the year. I think the most important thing is especially, um, in light of the work that needs to be done. I think teachers need to feel like we have their backs, and, and we realize that there's gonna be some times where, you know, we're looking for realistic gains. And, uh, we need to make sure that we're providing that ongoing support and encouragement, but a level of understanding as we move forward. So Sandy, I talked about the, the SGO process, where we do look to put students in tiers and determine, uh, some, some growth that we anticipate that they will make. I think one of the realistic challenges this year is that, coming into the school year, with the real or perceived narrative connected to learning loss related to the pandemic, uh, I think we all have to make sure that we realize that learning loss does not mean that students cannot learn. And I am, you know, I, I always go back to the, the importance and the, the power of our students. I think we have a great opportunity right now to regain a sense of consistency with students being physically present within schools. Uh, and I really think that that will yield, uh, some impact. So, you know, part of the issue is, in a lot of our classroom environments, you're looking at, uh, you know, half to two-thirds of that classroom taking on a slightly different academic complexion at the beginning of the school year. On the one hand, we can say that feels daunting. On the other hand, it enables us to kind of go about our instructional practices in a, in a way where we are initially supporting students as it relates to putting those scaffolds in place. Uh, but I'm confident that as we, we, we continue to work with students, um, we, you're gonna see those gains move forward. And we'll obviously provide that update to the board, but, you know, I, I don't want people to feel like this is, you know, a, a task that is not something we can handle. I think we just need to walk into it clear-eyed and optimistic, but recognizing that there's gonna be some things that we need to do differently. But I think we have to focus on the, the journey, the long haul, uh, and make sure that we are checking in with our teachers and, and making sure that they feel a level of just guidance and support, um, and alliance as, as we move forward. At, at a subsequent board meeting, we do need to provide an update though regarding some of those socio-emotional approaches that we are embedding this year. And that'll be, that'll be at a subsequent meeting. That was a long-winded answer, but.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions on the presentation?
I, I do have a question. Um, I was wondering about parents. Are parents made aware, um, or, or how are parents going to be made aware of this? Is it through like the parent conferences? You know what I mean, as far as like their child and like the progress that they need to make?
Help me out, Gene. I'm not really sure what you're asking me.
So if, if each student has, if, if the students need to develop, right? Are parents made aware that the, that the student needs to develop so that way they can get more involved with like homework or study groups or tutoring or, or after-school programs like you guys mentioned?
So the expectation would be in any given year that the first line of defense is always the teacher speaking to the parent, letting you know what is needed, where your child fares. And one of the things we talked a little bit about here is the grade book actually being true to tell you the journey that your student is, that your child is taking in progressing to mastery. That's what our goal is, to make sure that that's what our grade book is saying regarding any of those external programs that we have outside the classroom, be it an after-school program, before-school, or a weekend, um, experience. All of that would be sent home via, um, a school messenger or via letter based if your, what small group that's gonna come, be invited to it. So all of that would be, uh, reported out to parents based on what is being offered or needed at that point. But the first line would be your teacher and the parent having a conversation as to where your child is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess as a sidebar for Gene, were you curious about how you receive your star grades and all of that? Was that part of your question or no?
Right, like how would the parents know that their, I guess their child rated low on the scores and how they need to move them, you know what I mean, like to help their child?
Like is it standard to send all the star?
So you're, you're talking about the star scores in general?
Yes.
Okay, so the star score, just like the state data, is one data piece. So one data piece does not say that your child is in danger. That one data piece tells us as an average. Like for those of you who are math people and stats, when we talk about an average, we can pretty much say this is where the group is. That when we talk about an individual student, we have to look at multiple measures to determine where students are. So I would never say to a teacher, just tell the parent that their child is two years below because they are a fourth-grade student and they're testing at a two-point-one. That's not accurate because there are other assessments that we do, whether it's the day-to-day, whether it's running records, whether it's some of the state data, whether it's the, at beginning of the year assessments. So there are multiple measures, which is why the conversation has to be with the teacher and the parent, because one measure doesn't tell you the story.
Thanks, yeah. That's the piece that was, I thought was missing.
Thank you. Yeah, well, that's why I wasn't sure what was.
Thank you, Jean. You're welcome.
Sandy, just in terms of that Start Strong assessment data, how will parents receive that?
So in, as I stated earlier, so December is when we will get the, the state results back. Everything I shared with you right now was the preliminary results based on when the students took it. So in December, they, just like when we did the NJSLA in the park, you had individual student reports were mailed out to you. That will be mailed out to you. I believe we get them somewhere in the vicinity of December eighth to the fifteenth. So shortly after that, they will be mailed out. We will also be putting a letter in there telling you a little bit about the scores and what it signifies because I thought that was really important for us to tell you today, the story behind it, that it's not the NJSLA, but it's a smaller version of it. Okay, thanks.
Just a follow-up. And we will have a meeting and see the statewide results first, and then the parents will get it? Or, um, is it simultaneous?
So we have, you know, by code, we have to within sixty days share that out with you as well. So this was, as we said, the preliminary. We will share that with you, and it will break down how we compare it to the state as well as our demographics. So that would be what we would, um, do again, a smaller presentation in this one.
Okay, I'm just wondering in terms of questions from parents about their child's score, if they'll be getting that before we know what the state results or how our district compares? Just want the sequence of, uh, events.
I mean, you told, we'd get it first, but this, this year is a little bit of a unique year. So typically, we would be having a conversation about the spring assessment that did not occur this year. So I think it's still helpful to gain a sense of where we sit as it relates to, um, districts across the state. You know, uh, you know, the trend is that, you know, most, uh, students are going to have a noticeable dip, especially in the area of math. Uh, but, you know, by design, we should have that. We should be able to take a look at that, assess that, analyze that. And then parents should then, uh, receive their child's report, as it were, and determine one of three bands that they will fall into.
Can I make a comment about that? Is there any way, um, I know when those park letters would come out? Those are not, um, they're kind of harsh when you get them. And that's in a typical, like, normal functioning year. Is there any way that you could send out, um, a blast or a group thing just to let parents know that if they didn't see this or they're not aware of this, that, you know, we, we, we know about this and we expected this, and just so they don't see something like, oh, my child is three grades behind? And they don't.
Yeah, definitely. I think, I think the state was cognizant of that this year in terms of the language that they used for the categories that students will be placed in based on Start Strong. I think there was a certain sensitivity to kind of like the three, the three placements based on the support needed. You know, I think we're all walking into this with the notion of students needing support. It's just a matter of the amount and what that will look like. So, but I think the point's well taken.
As long as they're not as harsh as those park letters.
That's a great idea.
Okay, if we're wrapped up on that, we can go right to your superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so good evening, East Windsor Regional Community. I'd like to begin by thanking our student reps this, this evening for their report. Um, and, uh, at this time, I'm gonna say, you, you're free to stay, but if you'd like to get started on some homework, you are, you are more than welcome to leave at this time. But thank you, as always, for, for your report. Uh, I'd also like just to echo and reinforce on the heels of the presentation that just happened. I'd like to thank, uh, the work of Sandy and our supervisors and our administrative team really for kind of preparing the overview of our student performance data. We realize it's a, a unique and somewhat, um, sensitive year. But as I just said, I, I'm confident that, um, our, our teachers and our students uh, will definitely make growth this year. Uh, I think we just have to be cognizant and, and realize, you know, the growth that they make, and we have high expectations. Um, even if it may fall short of a typical year's growth, I think that we need to focus on what that growth reflects, uh, as we move forward. And, and I just feel like, look, we're in this predicament today because of the pandemic, right? Our students from March twenty-twenty, I remind everyone, were, at no fault of their own, um, you know, thrown into kind of a disruptive educational platform. And, uh, you know, this is just, I just think a further realization of the value of having students in classrooms and gaining that learning that they need. So tonight, I have a few, a few updates. So tonight, I have a few, a few updates. Uh, the first, I'll, I'll just share that we do have on the agenda tonight the emergency virtual or remote instructional plan, which is a, really a state requirement stemming from the pandemic. I'm hoping that we never have to use it. Um, it's just connected to ensuring that in the event that there's a public health emergency or recommendation from a public health official that requires the district to close for more than three days, the district is prepared to transition to virtual or remote learning. Uh, just some components of the plan that's necessary, obviously, will be, you know, how will that platform take, take flight? Um, you know, we, lessons learned from last year made this plan somewhat comfortable to develop. Uh, obviously, we need to look at the, the length of the school day, um, you know, the educational platform that we'll utilize. Um, obviously, there's a provision in there for us to make sure that we're providing meals to students as we did last year. Uh, and also technology as it relates to devices and accessibility to broadband. So we believe as a school district that we're, we're quite prepared. Um, you know, being thrown into the deep end literally last year put us in a predicament where we, uh, had made some, some clear intentional decisions to ensure that from a technology standpoint, all of our students are prepared to have their own device. And we have provisions in place for families to access, um, strong Wi-Fi connections, and we'll continue to assess that as we move forward. Uh, I just wanna just have a, a point of recognition for some of our students tonight. And I'm just gonna take a brief moment just to highlight the National Merit Scholarship Program. Um, and that's really connected to students in their junior year taking the PSATs. So I just wanna highlight about 18 of our students at Hightstown High School that were recognized. Uh, just a little bit of background, uh, each year about 1.5 million juniors take the PSAT, and they enter the National Merit Scholarship Program. Uh, and only juniors taking the PSAT are considered. So, uh, the top 50,000 students are recognized as either commended or semifinalists. Um, the 16,000 semifinalists continue in the competition, uh, and it's kind of proportionally determined by state. And there's a host of scholarship opportunities for those students. I just wanna make sure that we, tonight, I'm very proud and pleased to share that the East Windsor Regional School District has a group of very talented high school students, high school seniors, who have been identified as commended students, and we also have one semifinalist. Just wanna take a moment just to share the names of those students. Uh, we have Druva Arakar, Seiya Budahadav, Darrell Chu, Anj Dalia, Catherine DiMarco, Silo Fay, Amkar Ayer, Christopher Lardaback, Benafi Muthala, Shiraj Neelagamun, Jake Pandina, Lane Peterson, Arav Raval, Sashi Samdani, Shivani Shankar, Akul Solanki, Ella Safaris. And the one semifinalist, National Merit semifinalist, is Jason Shumsky. So I just wanna congratulate our students and their families. Clearly a testament to the robust academic program that we do have here in the district, which is, you know, orchestrated and facilitated by very amazing teachers. So, congratulations to them. Quick update as we conclude or approach the conclusion of the fall sports extracurricular update. Uh, look, we, we, I'm, I'm pleased to, to share that we've had a fall season. This time last year, we were kind of tiptoeing and walking on eggshells regarding whether or not the fall season would come to fruition. I think part of a comprehensive educational program clearly addresses the, the many talents of students, and I think participating in extracurricular, co-curricular, and athletic opportunities is clearly a rudimentary pillar that I think is vital for our students as we look at developing the whole child. So just a couple of highlights, and, you know, I could go on, but I just wanna recognize our marching band who participated in a competition in Robbinsville this weekend and placed third. Uh, our cheer team is preparing for the CBC Championship in West Windsor on November 13th. A cross-country team, uh, had a very successful season. Uh, I wanna just give a shout-out to Duvie Chitari, who broke her own personal record and now holds the two fastest times, excuse me, in Hightstown High School history. Uh, a boys soccer team had a very successful season, had a nine, four, and three record. Uh, they unfortunately lost in the quarterfinals of the Mercer County Tournament this weekend against Hopewell, but they do have sectionals coming up shortly. A junior varsity girls soccer team finished the season with a 10-1 record, very impressive. Um, and our varsity girls are looking forward to the NJSIA tournament in November. Field hockey team finished their season last week with a, a huge win against West Windsor North. Uh, tennis team had a 13-5 record, and our girls advanced to the semifinals of the NJSIA sectional tournament, uh, which is very impressive. Football team's also on a, a pathway to a successful season. They currently have a 4-3 record. They will travel to Allentown this Friday. Uh, hopefully, if they win, it enables them to qualify for state playoffs for the first time since 2006. Friday's game also marks the first-ever Battle of Old York Road. The winner will receive the Peto Cup Trophy for the first time. So just, just a quick highlight, wanna thank all of our coaches. Obviously, I wanna thank our student athletes. I do wanna commend our athletic director, Mike Berger, and also assistant athletic director, Mike Zapeke, for their work this season. We are now in the throes of preparing for the winter season, which obviously comes with some slight challenges. We obviously wanna maximize opportunities for our students to participate and ensure that our seasons continue to flourish. However, because we're indoors, things are gonna look a little different, and we're in the process of determining what that is. I will say that we obviously envision some limitations to indoor capacity for spectators. Obviously, we're looking to have spectators. We are gonna place a premium on making sure that our parents of our student athletes are, are, are kind of our VIPs as it relates to those spectators, but we'll share some more information shortly. I'm, I'm in some conversation, and we're all in some conversation within the CBC, uh, in, in the hopes that we kind of have some commonality as we approach the, the winter season, and more specifically, the, the spectator dynamic that, that will, will take place. We're also connecting that conversation to the arts as well. So I wanna make sure that our, um, our musical performances, our drama performances, we wanna make sure that, uh, we can have the ability to have some folks in the audience, especially, once again, the parents and family members of those, uh, folks who are performing. So I actually have a meeting tomorrow with our supervisor of arts and the high school principal. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about, uh, what the indoor arts performances will resemble. Um, I'll conclude with parent conferences. I think they just came up in the presentation, just as a reminder that we are approaching parent conference season. They will be virtual conferences. We, that's one of the, I guess, lessons learned from the pandemic. We found that the virtual conference structure actually is actually a little bit more personable. It alleviates parents from having to wait around, um, and I think it enables them to kind of adhere to a, a, a schedule that we think is more meaningful and values our family's time. So, um, because our next board meeting, I think, won't be until November 15th, I will share that November 9th will be high school conferences, and that'll be evening session. November 11th will be our elementary school conferences. You, you, you should have received some information already from, uh, your respective schools. November 16th is also a parent conference session, afternoon, evening, for our elementary schools. And November 18th will be the middle school afternoon and evening conferences. And November 22nd will also serve as a session for the middle school, both afternoon and evening conferences. And with that said, it concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions for Mark? We'll move then to item 58 for a stop at each for board member comments.
Okay. Um, yes, I'd just like to make a request, um, that the district consider adding aides to the buses to assist with student supervision and safety? We can discuss this further if anyone wants to, or I'll just make a simple statement. That's it. Anybody else?
I thought there were already aides on the buses. No?
Well, some buses do. Student, you know, we've got, um, based on the student's IEP, those, if those buses will have aides. But typically, no. Our entire fleet, no, we don't assign aides at this time.
Um, I just wanna give a, um, a shout-out and a congratulations to the football team for an unbelievable win Friday, a homecoming game. But also everyone else who was there and involved, from the marching band to the national anthem singer, to the herd themselves. Um, our very own Gabby was on the homecoming court. Um, so it was just a really, uh, great night. Um, and it was nice to see everyone back and enjoying, you know, high school and community in the greater East Windsor-Hightstown community at that.
Nicole?
Um, I just had two things. Um, one, just to piggyback off Mark and the fall sports, I just wanted to say that, um, the freshman, the high school freshman soccer team also had a really good season. They were eight, two, and one. Um, I was just curious, oh, I wanted to thank Sandy for the presentation, um, and for presenting that, to, to take all that and to make it into, um, something that we could understand. Data always throws me a little bit, but that was, that was great. Thank you. Um, I just had a question. How are we doing? Are we having, um, how are we doing with subs? Are we having issues with subs, or do we have plenty of subs? Have we seen anything come up? I, I didn't know if that was something that is difficult to get.
That's a very sensitive topic, Nicole.
Oh, sorry.
I don't like when people bring up subs.
You can table it.
No, what I'll say is, you know, we're not, this is a common issue, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not making any excuses. Um, we're, we're probably down about 20% from a fill rate standpoint. We typically, historically, would have about a, about a 75% to 80% fill rate for substitutes pre-pandemic. We're at around 55%, 60% fill rate at this point in time. So it's not good, you know? Um, we've increased our pay. Uh, we're looking to leverage our colleges and universities, especially, you know, um, there's been a new bill that transitioned the law that reduced the credit requirement for substitute certification. So it went from 60 credits to be a substitute to 30 credits, and you need to be 20 years old. So we're actually gonna try to take advantage of that. We, we utilize a substitute service, ESS. So I'm hoping that, you, you know, part of the issue is, is like a, there's a pool of substitutes, and that pool of substitutes is getting kind of, you know, pulled and, and exhausted. We, we've also added something in district that I think has helped, where we've, uh, offered a, a more financial incentive for those substitutes who have, who have agreed to give us at least three days a week. Uh, and, and that three days a week is connected to a school. So one, it builds a sense of community. It builds a sense of reliability. Um, and that's helped. I have to say, that's actually been a positive for us. But I'll, I'll say this, in terms of, you know, how I view it, uh, I will view it as a work in progress. You know, I think that when you just look at the landscape, I think, you know, there's a national issue connected to certain positions that have a difficulty to fill, right? And we can talk a little bit about some of what's happened in society during the past 18 months, where some people, based on a host of factors, have decided that certain jobs are not for them right now. So I think some of our issues that we've dealt, dealt with are people are uncomfortable entering school spaces, but I think that's getting better. Um, and, you know, substitute teaching has some competition with other jobs that pay comparable, sometimes more. So I think we'll continue to, to, to be creative, but I, I think for us, our principals are, um, looking to make it happen as best we can. Um, and our teachers actually have been helping out and covering where, where necessary. But it is, you know, certain days of the week, like Friday, tho, those are tough days. But we'll continue to stay the course. I'm hoping that we can increase the pool of substitutes. I'm just thinking longer term. Uh, that, that's really something that we need to watch over as we move forward.
Do you know, is this something that, um, other districts in the county struggle with? I don't know if it's something that's not just.
Oh, everyone's struggling with it. I mean, other, other commu, like, we're actually fortunate that, you know, we, we've actually filled, uh, uh, you know, the, the permanent teaching positions that we have in the district. For the most part, we've got a few, like, LOA three-month stints that we need to, to fill, and a couple of positions at the high school. I mean, we've got, you know, most of the districts in our county and surrounding, uh, communities are having difficulty filling positions for this year, teaching positions. So, yes, everyone's looking for substitutes. Everyone's looking for teachers. I mean, especially in certain, certain areas, special education, bilingual ESL, but sometimes just typical positions, like a, an ELA position, um, where once upon a time, you'd have a plethora of folks that you could, could kind of work with. So, um, yes, things have become more competitive, um, but everyone is dealing with some of the same challenges. We, we actually tried to get ahead of this somewhat last year, where we did increase our substitute, uh, pay. Um, some of it's not just pay, and that's why we got into looking at the, I'll call it building-based sub, where someone can commit to three days, and you can promise them that they'll stay in the same school. Some of it's work conditions. Um, so yes, this is a challenge that's being faced across the state.
Thanks.
Mike?
Just wanted to, uh, mention the policy committee before tonight's meeting, uh, primarily to go over the current district policy on homework. And we reviewed the discussions that, along with Mark, that he's been having internally within the administration. And just gave some general feedback on the 12, the 13 points that are currently on the policy. Uh, and moving forward, um, there's going to be an additional round of internal discussion. Can you see a little closer? A little speaker, a little loud. Um, can you hear me?
Hi.
A little close. Sorry. So basically, um, we met to discuss the policy around, uh, the district's homework policy. Uh, and next steps will be additional discussions internally on, uh, around, um, specifically the grade book and how that's being utilized to track homework, uh, completion rates. And that's going to then go out to students and parents for additional feedback for our next round of that. It's on the, on that.
Great, thanks. Any other members of the committee wanna?
Yeah, just, just a quick question. Uh, Sandy, when are we gonna get the next presentation to track the numbers that you presented? Because, I mean, it's great to know where we are now, but how are we gonna track the progress and how are we catching up students? When are you planning on showing us another presentation?
So the next round will be coming in February, once we draw our new year assessments.
Okay.
For us to be able to show the typical.
So February, okay.
And we'll be like, now, that would be early, so we'd be able to get through everybody.
Right, right, absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Um, no, Michael summed it up pretty well. We went over all the 13 facets of the, the homework, existing homework policy, and Mark gave us some updates as to what they've already gone over with, um, gray, uh, teach, le, teach, teacher team leaders and, and building administrators and all of that. Um, so there's some next steps involved, and we'll look at it again. There'll probably be some, some changes in the future, but not, nothing's ironed out yet.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add that, um, I mentioned probably a couple of meetings ago that we were taking a look at the existing homework policy, not for any specific reason. So I think homework is something that we should always take a look at. It, it can sometimes be controversial. You know, we can talk about too much, not enough, uh, just right. We call it like this, you know, Goldilocks homework approach. But I, I, I do think it was healthy for us to take a look at what the written policy states and really engage in an analysis of kind of what does that actually look like within our schools and classrooms. So, um, tonight did serve as an opportunity just to kind of look at this 13 kind of guidelines that currently exist, and we're really just having some conversations and taking a deeper dive into how does that compare, uh, to, to what's happening in the classroom. We engaged in this process with the district administrators last week, and we'll continue to do so. We need to kind of take it a little closer to the classroom, get some feedback from teachers, ultimately get, get feedback from students and families as we move forward.
Thanks. Anyone else?
I have.
Ram?
So a few, a couple of meetings ago, we had talked about a few things, just maybe you had al, already responded to it in the last meeting.
Hey, Ram, can you speak closer? I cannot even hear you, so it's.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. So we had talked about a few things in the meeting before the last one, and maybe you had already responded to it. One was about the high school. One was about the high school bells and the drop-off at high school. Did we get some feedback on it?
Yeah, in terms of the high school bells, well, the high school bells, I shared with you the rationale behind it at that meeting. The drop-off, we, you know, we observed the drop-off. It's really a volume issue. So as you know, we switched the location, right, compared to where we did it last year. It used to be in the front. We moved it to, I guess you would call it the side, the Leschen Lane side. But you're right, for about a five-minute window, five to seven-minute window, just the volume of cars, it creates a backup, right? And obviously, we're asking parents to be cooperative. We do believe that there's a correlation between, you know, parents not being comfortable, maybe at the beginning of the year in particular, putting their student on a bus, so therefore driving them. Fortunately, we have a number of students that drive themselves. But actually, we just looked at it as a, as a traffic flow issue. I met with the high school principal. And we believe that, you know, we had an issue before with the drop-off, but we had the drop-off occurring where we had pedestrians also crossing by the main entrance. We've alleviated the significant issue that was there. But yeah, right now, we're looking at a volume dynamic and just making sure people are being cooperative as it relates to the drop-off. So the high school principal's here. I don't know if you want to expand on the no-bell philosophy? Go for it, Mr. Vincent.
Glad I came tonight. So we, we had a long debate about bells and that, that really started at the end of last year. And one of the concerns was when we were coming back, we're 1,700 students and in some parts of our building, it's 1950s in the width and the, the traffic flow. We made substantial changes in the flow of traffic in the building. We've now gone to a one-way up and a one-way down. And one of the things that we addressed was just the sheer volume of students that are moving in the building. So I'll just kind of take the, the idea of the bells upstairs. One of the things we looked at is if a, if a teacher just, we obviously have clocks and we dismiss and we try to just keep the flow moving a little bit. So if it's like a second or two off makes all the difference in the world in those stairways, trying to space that out, moving the students. One of the biggest things, and it's interesting, you would think bells would indicate, you know, time to move. Bells at the high school really indicate time to run the class because now I'm late pre-COVID. So students now, when they're dismissed, it's, if you're in the building, one of the things you'll hear all the time is, you know, keep moving, keep moving. There's been a substantial increase in the amount of students that are moving at dismissal of a class to their next class. And we did not want students just hanging out, waiting to the last possible moment to get the class. And, and we put this to the, we, it was split, you know, the faculty, there were some pro bells and pro no bells. Some of my biggest people supporting bells have now come back and said, the no bells is a better way to go. When I met with my building reps, they've kind of said that they see a difference in the traffic flow. It's not, it does not get every student moving to class. But we definitely see a change in the flow of the students going there. The, the other part of it was just to keep the traffic flow on a steady pace. You know, when we opened up, we did not want people hanging out in our hotspots. The hotspots would be upstairs, the stairwells, the commons outside the auditorium. So right now, there's a sense of you are moving to class. So no bells tied to, that you're not waiting for the bell to ring. So, you know, so far, you know, we have not seen, you know, any substantial issues with not having the bells. Biggest thing, everybody has the, you know, computers with the clocks and they know that, you know, it helps. Sometimes I see some teachers at the end, 30 seconds, a minute, take a mass break, move their students out to an area. So they're almost transitioning. I like the idea of trying to transition in a way to get students to their next class, so.
Any questions, Ron? Any questions for Dennis?
No, I'm, I'm good. I mean, I, it's interesting to find out, you know, what. I did hear from some students that they were, they were missing the bell. But I think, you know, it's, like you said, it's probably 50/50 among the students too.
Yeah, I've talked, I, we talk regularly to students. I, you know, we talk to students, you know, some, some like the sense that the bell just is the signal that you now rush to get the class. So I definitely see a difference in that. So, I mean, we're constantly monitoring. You know, the first couple of weeks of school, it's the honeymoon stage, you know, everybody's moving. So we gotta, we have to look at that. We definitely need to be mindful of, you know, now that you don't hear a bell, when does the period start? But every student knows to the minute when a period ends and when a period starts. And I would say about the, the traffic flow, you, I, I, we saw, I saw you out there one morning. It's like a 10-minute window and it is, it's heavy volume for 10 minutes. And then after that 10 minutes, it's really back to normal.
I, I just said, you know, when we were approving that plan, my understanding was the drop-off was only, going to be only on this side. But what I see is children get dropped off in the front of the.
Well, you know, that, that's an interesting thing. And I, I've been in touch with the police. Parents are not following the directions. They're dropping off whenever they see an opportunity or like a stoppage in front of the stop sign. Same with the cabs. We talked about maybe having an officer present there to stop that, that drop-off before you actually get to the spot. You're absolutely right. I see that all the time. We have one of our security officers out at dismissal, not having the parents pick up on the side by my office. You know, we'll keep monitoring that. I would say, I would definitely echo what Mr. Daniel said. If you remember before the construction project, it was absolutely a safety issue for pedestrians, students. It was a high risk with the buses. So it is a much better drop-off off of Leschen. But there is definitely, I think also right now, and I talked to some parents, you know, I think maybe a little bit with the apprehension with putting a student on a bus. A lot of parents who could bust their child, i- it's driving them. So maybe as, as the trends improve, we'll see more students back on the bus. And we split our fleet of drop-off in the morning also. Half the buses are in the back in the morning, half is up front. So we don't have students coming in, in one door. So we'll keep monitoring it. You know, obviously, we want to make sure everybody's safe out there.
Thank you. I had a couple of other things. I think there was a, so how do we ensure, you know, there was an issue with some debate team that could not participate in the debate because it hadn't got, gotten board approval? And then we, we had to work things out to make sure that they participate. And there, I don't believe it was because the students did anything wrong. Probably the, the teacher who was responsible for that club did not send in the paperwork in time to the board. Now, how are we ensuring that teachers who are running these clubs don't make, miss these deadlines? I mean, it's unfair for the children to miss out on a, on a competition or a trip because some, some teacher did not send in the paperwork.
Right, so from, from my vantage point, and I'm not going to get into conversations about specific teachers, you know, the administration oversees who's interested in facilitating a club, right? That situation that was presented, from, from the information that I had, students weren't in, in any jeopardy of not participating. It, it may have meant that that teacher may not be, have been facilitating that particular time. So, you know, we have situations where people apply. It's twofold, right? You've got scenarios where you've got voids that are not filled and you have to tap people on the shoulder and advertise and shake the trees. You've got other circumstances where people have been in a role and we still, you know, have them apply every year. But sometimes there, there can be a certain comfort, knowing that someone's taken on that, that leadership and worked with students. So, you know, you know, the way that, that was presented, that wasn't all the reality. There was something that the individual needed to do, but sometimes people aren't sure if they're going to take something on, right? They, they intend to do it, but they're not sure. In this instance, the person thought they did. So there is a check and balance, but even if that were not the case, the students were still going to participate. We would never have that be a circumstance where students wouldn't be able to do something. I'm not familiar with any, any extracurricular or co-curricular activity where students have not been able to participate. Even if the individual who we thought would be a part of it couldn't do it, we would step in and, and take it on even temporarily until we had that worked out.
Sure. I mean, I think we should have some checks and balances, but this is not the first time. You know, it has happened before. At least I know of one instance that it has happened before. This is the second. But I think if there is a teacher that is, or somebody that is volunteering to be, to manage a club, I think we should make sure that students don't suffer because something was.
I agree. No, I, I completely agree, Ron. So, you know, I am not going to have, yeah, I don't even want students getting nervous about that not being a reality. So I think to answer your question, if we've got a staff member who, and people are getting compensated, you know, oftentimes to do this work, if someone is not reliable, then that's something that we need to assess as it relates to renewing or not. And then that's what we have to control. And, and we have an opportunity to do that every year. Every year when we have the conclusion of our extracurriculars, we get feedback via the schools regarding who we think's the right fit. So that's, that's really where we are.
The one other last thing that I had was, this month is Hindu Heritage V, Heritage Month. I think I sent you a notification from South Brunswick recognizing it in their district.
The township, the South Branch Township, yes.
Yeah, so maybe we should do something next year at least.
Sure, we can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else? We have a second opportunity, probably in just a few minutes. I did want to ask Mark, unless we hold this, why don't we wait on this to, to talk about it? Let's, let's move on. Item five B, is it? Yes, first opportunity for public comment. District policy 167 governs public participation in board meetings. So to summarize, there's a forum no more than 20 minutes long. Each speaker has three minutes and please announce name, home address, and group affiliation if appropriate. And we have a microphone at the podium if anybody from the public wishes to make any comments this evening. Okay. Item six, we have a closed session. There are a couple items, personnel and the hip report. And I estimate 15 minutes or less for that. Well, actually, maybe not. Maybe we have a couple of people to meet.
Right.
That should be long.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, see you back here in a few minutes. Okay, see you back here in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
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 Okay.
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 It's all highway traffic, highway one ninety-five, twenty-nine down by the ballpark. We're across the North Hill toll bridge, one. The action is the shortest.
Oh, getting all fogged up. That's the worst. I can't wait till masks are done. I am not either. And I knew this was gonna happen, I didn't bring my umbrella, I didn't. But I wasn't. I have the umbrella, it's working.
See, only problem to start at seven thirty, you wind up, wind up being nine, they'll tell me that. I don't know about you guys, but I mean, it usually takes me a little time before I get into bed when I get home.
Oh, yeah, for sure. You gotta wind down.
Did you eat all the coochies? Did you eat all the coochies, that's what you're gonna be doing.
All right. We'll resume with our regular session, item seven, old business committee meeting dates as was reported. We had a meeting of the policy committee earlier, we received a report from that committee. Curriculum committee meets November fifteenth. That's Colleen, Rom. No. Sorry. Colleen, Tina, Jean, and Nicole. So if any of you, if one of you is unable to make it, let us know, we'll have a substitute to fill in. And then, um. The mental health committee, I think we had a wellness committee. Did we rename that? Yeah, anyway, December thirteenth. And, uh. Yeah, it's listed on the, on the committee list, there's a wellness committee. That's Jenna, Jean, Nicole, and Tina. In December. All right, item eight. Manded policy for second reading.
Yes, a policy twenty-four, twenty-five, emergency virtual or remote instruction program.
Any discussion? Call the board, please.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran.
Yes.
Ms. Lanz.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes.
Yes.
Ms. Brigholi.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Laberty.
Yes.
Motion carries, item nine is a second opportunity for board member comments. Before we start, I asked Mark if he could explain the book we received this evening, Grading for Equity. And just what, you know, the, uh, the idea behind it, how it's used in the district, and what the, uh, the board should do with it.
Okay, so, I'd be happy to plug it. So first and foremost, we are engaging in, uh, an administrative book study with this text. So I'm really just extending it to the board, um, you know, so you can kind of, at your own leisure, have a sense of what we're reading. What prompted it is the fact that, you know, we have an equity initiative in our school district in terms of, um, you know, outcomes and opportunities for students. Grading, though, is almost a separate issue that's so intertwined with everything else we do within schools. You know, grading predetermines a student's journey in so many different ways. So we're right now kind of looking at our grading structures and making sure that, one, we're assessing them, but also, two, we're determining, um, do we have commonality? And what are some of the philosophical underpinnings that are kind of determining our grading structures, uh, from a, from a K-12 standpoint? This text is, is serving as an opportunity for us to, one, uh, kind of look in the mirror and assess some of our current practices. And really pose questions regarding, um, you know, what we're doing and why we do it. And I had a conversation earlier tonight, uh, with the policy committee. Uh, we were talking about the homework policy, but even the homework policy kind of dovetails and overlaps into the work connected to, to this text. Because, you know, we're having conversations about a student, or two students, uh, and depending on the nature of the teacher that they have, and the grading structure connected to that department or that particular teacher, it could yield, uh, different outcomes for that student. Even though the student may actually show more proficiency and mastery regarding content. So this is a, a book for us to really, um, assess and, and reflect on, on, on some of our existing structures. Obviously, we're not looking to throw anything away if we believe it's, if it's meaningful and useful. However, I think it's healthy for us to, um, have some, some self-analysis and make sure that what we believe, uh, is, is in place is something that creates, um, I'm gonna say equitable opportunities for all students to show and be recognized for, for their learning within the district. So, yeah, the book is really just a read-along, and, um, you know, we engaged in our first session, uh, last Thursday as an administrative team, about thirty, thirty-four of us. And, um, just created some, some very passionate discussion, debate, um, kind of, really just in terms of what do, you know, really drawing on the essence of kind of like teaching and learning and, and the grading dynamic that should reflect that. And just making sure that that's something that, um, we need to make sure that we're not taking for granted. So, uh, that's my, my little plug, uh, for the book, but definitely a worthwhile read, I think it's very relatable. Uh, I'm reading it from an educator lens, I'm reading it from a parental lens, I'm reading it from a, a, you know, an instructional leader lens. Um, so, you know, uh, good food, food for thought.
Thanks, so we should read it at our leisure as you suggest and bring any questions back here to a board forum or email you.
Of course.
Try to have a discussion about what, anything in its content that.
Yeah, any questions that surface, actually, what I'll share with the board, I'll share the, the format that we're using. That way you can kind of have a sense of where we are. And also kind of, we, we, you know, as we kind of jigsaw the book, uh, there's gonna be a presentation that supports it, so I'll make, I'll make sure I share that with the board as well, all right?
Sure. Okay, um, board member comments?
Um, yes, actually, um, Dennis and Rom's discussion about the traffic flow reminded me I wanted to ask another traffic flow question, um, regarding lunches. And with all the changes that were implemented, do you have any updates or things working? Do we still need to make additional changes, um, in terms of time allotted for children to eat and appropriate social distancing at the lunches? Are we doing good?
Oh, I think we're doing an amazing job. What I will say is, um, so it's a couple of things. One, the flow clearly has improved. A lot of that was, was, uh, down to just transitioning and acclimating ourselves, uh, and also the fact that we've advertised that all lunches are free. It created a significant demand, even those students that, you know, bring their own lunch to school were still opting for a lunch that was being served at the school level, depending on what that menu choice was, right? It's hard to turn down pizza, you know, um, so, you know, we worked on a few things. In terms of, you know, um, specifically the middle school, we, we needed to create some more, I think, flexibility in terms of where students were situated. Um, I know that the middle school put that in place, the high school, you know, we've got, uh, we have a lot of students here, you know? So, um, you know, all of the schools have, I think, established, um, an organized structure for lunch. Um, I believe that the time that students have to eat is adequate. So I do believe that we've moved beyond where we were during the first two weeks of September. Um, I'm not sure, you know, from, as a, from a parental lens, I'm not sure if you, you, you're hearing otherwise, but I do think that we're in a, a much better place now.
A little bit in the high school, some issues with overflow into common areas, I guess.
Say, say that one more time, sorry.
Overflow into common areas, some parents were saying, students were saying kids are eating in the halls or.
Oh, 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 yeah, the high school was, you know, all, high school, middle school in particular, n- needed to have an element of flexibility. In terms of maximizing the use of the building. So the high school did spread out, and you can see that when you walk the halls, you've got the commons area where there's some tables set up all the way to the foyer. And we got some tables outside. So I think, you know, the conversation that, uh, I've had with the high school is that, great, we'll spread kids out as best we can, uh, and creating that element of flexibility, even to the point where you can eat outside. We just needed to balance that with appropriate supervision and monitoring of students. So they were staying on campus. The high schoo-, uh, the middle school, uh, expanded their seating arrangement, so they added tables to where the auditorium area was, uh, to create a little bit more flexibility. Um, you know, the one, the one area for us, I'll, I'll admit, is that, you know, we don't have the ability to situate students one hundred percent where they're six feet apart when they have face coverings off while they're eating, right? So that's an element of, um, I, I, I'll call it just slight concern, especially when we're dealing with situations related to contact tracing. It's just one of the difficult realities of where we are. The cafeteria and the eating process is a place of vulnerability as it relates to, to contact tracing. Uh, but in terms of general flow, uh, students having time to eat, I think we're in a much better place.
Okay, and do we have any ideas of how to remedy the social distancing portion of it, or?
No, no, I don't. I can spread kids all around the school, we've, that's one thing we attempted to do. I think at the middle school level, uh, and high school level, our vaccination numbers continue to increase, which is really helpful because it kind of nullifies the notion of close contact as it relates to students being vaccinated. And also, we have growing numbers at the middle school, which will also be helpful.
Right.
Obviously, with students being eligible for vaccination ages five through eleven, I don't know how our community will respond to that, and I'm not looking to, to force it on anyone. But in terms of spacing, it's difficult, both from a staffing standpoint, look, we've got our barriers, and we've got three feet separation in the cafeteria. Um, but it is a place where students are not wearing face coverings for a period of time, right? And, uh, not, not an extended period of time, because once students have finished eating, they are putting the face covering back on. Um, but I, but I anticipate as our numbers continue to decrease within the region, the past three weeks of the, uh, New Jersey Department of Health Cali report. You know, there's been a decrease in, uh, case for one hundred thousand, um, for, for, actually, four weeks in a row, so the numbers are going down. I say that always cautiously, just because we're transitioning into cold flu, winter, indoors. So I say that with an element of hesitancy, but the vaccination numbers, as I said, at the secondary level for us, have been helpful. Because they have alleviated, uh, situations where students were deemed to be close contacts and then needed to be excluded from school. I, I always, I'm always troubled by students being excluded, and I recognize it needs to occur. But, yeah, I, I don't have the manpower, you know, we talked about staffing earlier.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, I don't have the staff, you, even if I, you know, we've toyed with so many different variations on this, Tina, and I say that sincerely. Even if we, for example, dispersed students across the school in classroom, I don't have staff to monitor that. And I, and I'm also, I'm also concerned about, long-term, if we were utilizing classroom spaces to eat, it's not the most hygienic structure over time. Just having food open out in the classroom, and then you gotta clean that.
Agreed.
Those are some of the things we've, we've been battling a little bit. So I think we're in a place that is the best of a challenging situation for a small portion of the day.
Okay, thanks.
I had a, you had brought up, um, the, a free lunch for everyone. Um, can you speak a little bit about how that came to be, like, um, why it's in place and how long? Is it something that's just for this year for COVID, or is that something that's gonna be forever?
Yeah, no, no, um, this is a continuation of, uh, the, the United States Department of Agriculture. So last year when we transitioned, um, March twenty-twenty, right, when we, we abruptly, uh, went home, as it were. You know, there's still an obligation to provide food distribution and the different ways you could do it. Initially, there was an obligation to provide, um, meal accessibility for those students who were eligible for free or reduced lunch. From an operational standpoint, when this first started, we were still saying to the community, any family could come and get food, right? But then we were almost checking off two different lists. So you'd come in, you'd get your meal, and we'd check you off as someone who was eligible, and if you didn't, we would, we wouldn't take any money, but we would just check off that you weren't eligible. As things progressed and the pandemic situation became more long-term, uh, obviously, one of the, you know, number of federal supports that were put forth was the fact that in our community, based on the percentage of students who were eligible for free and reduced lunch, it enabled us to, uh, I guess, have all students qualify. Um, that took us through the conclusion of last school year. During the summer, as we were preparing to reopen, nationally, that became something that was extended for this school year. Um, based on providing supports for our families as we move forward. So that will continue for the duration of this year. Uh, my expectation is that they'll assess that throughout the year with the notion of us continuing to kind of restart and regain a sense of normalcy. Uh, and that will probably move away, you know? Um, you know, we are still kind of, it is hard, because we still need families who believe that they are eligible for free and reduced lunch to still complete the application. So from a school district and our communication with the federal government, we can maintain a, a more accurate sense of those families who are eligible because there are some funding opportunities associated with that. So we'll, we'll need to revisit that as we move forward, uh, but it, we don't expect our current status to go beyond this year.
Okay, so the funds that, um, for students who typically wouldn't need that free or reduced lunch, that's, they're getting funded from the federal government? And then, um, is, is there, so no one's paying for lunch? Like, if you were to go into the cafeteria, there wouldn't be money exchanging, like, ever, everyone knows that they can get a free lunch?
Oh, everyone knows it. Now, some things aren't free. Now, when I say free lunch, the high school's a little difficult, there's so many different, but we've, we've kind of narrowed some of the options. But in terms of what we would consider a type A lunch, type A lunch has a certain definition in terms of food groups. Um, in, in Chartwell's, our food service provider, has been really creative and, and flexible in terms of packaging lunch options, whether they're hot, cold, uh, to kind of, to kind of make it easy for students, right? Uh, in terms of what they're selecting, so Taipei lunches fall under the free umbrella. When you start getting into like a la carte snack type things, different story, but we've, we've kind of trimmed that in a way and, and tried to package things so they resemble a Taipei lunch to alleviate that. We're trying to limit lines, we're trying to limit kids going back and forth. When you get your food, sit down, and that's kind of what you're gonna have to eat. So, um, yeah, no monetary exchange, limited, we're really not looking to do that.
Oh, thank you.
Jean?
Um, for DI, the, um, Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring program?
Oh, you're on the exception items already?
Yeah, I'm sorry, are we not?
Yeah, we'll take comments then when we open it up with a second.
Oh, okay, then I'll.
We can get there if we're ready. Second up, a few for public comments. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? I don't see anybody, okay. So now we can get a, a motion for item ten, exception items.
Motion to approve routine items by exception. Having read the materials received, I move that the board approve the routine agenda items as submitted. A, staffing for October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. B, EWRSD, emergency virtual or remote instruction program. C, HIV report from October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. D, travel, virtual, and related expenses. E, safe routes to school program grant. F, approve MHK surplus math textbooks. G, connect church donation to Grace N. Rogers Elementary School. H, board approval is requested for participation in community-based instruction or CBI trips for the transportation and independence, I'm sorry, transition and independence train program at Heitstown High School. I, approve the Big Brother, Big Sisters mentoring program. J, out-of-district placement. K, professional services for students. L, approval of professional services. M, PLD exterior alterations, change order number one. N, PLD HVAC phase two, change order number three, and O, bill list of October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Comments, Jean?
So now for DI, Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring program. Did we receive any details as far as like how the program is supposed to run? It's gonna start tomorrow, but are the mentors, um, going to like help the mentees with their homework? Because I know there was a problem with homework class here, um, or are they just going to just have fun with them? Like, what are they gonna actually, like, did we receive details to know like what they're actually going to do? And how did the, um, how did the students sign up for it?
And when, when you say we, are you referring to board members?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm not sure what you mean by we, in terms of like who.
We, as far as like the, the students and the parents, like, how, how was the, the.
Are you right?
notified that the program was going on for them to sign up for the program?
It's a great question. I believe it was, uh, communicated via the school. We identify students, and I would imagine our counselors are connected to identifying students who would be eligible. This is something we've done for a number of years, um, and we're just kind of restarting it. I'm pretty sure that we, we structured a virtual option of this last year. So obviously, Big Brothers, Big Sisters is a, is a, an established program that we partner with. So they identify high school students who are interested in serving as big brothers and big sisters. Uh, there's some training that goes along with what they're doing. Uh, should they have fun? Certainly. Is it just playtime? No. We wanna make sure that they have an older, uh, young adult, I'll call it, who can provide some guidance, both from a life standpoint, but also providing some support academically, uh, which we think is, uh, which is vital. Uh, so in terms of the specifics, in terms of the criteria for the mentees, I am not exactly sure, but I know we, we, we try to match and, and identify students who we think would be a good fit. Uh, obviously, we put more of an emphasis on the students who are serving as big brothers and big sisters to make sure that they are serving as appropriate role models and citizens to provide that guidance, and really wanna do that with students at the elementary level. What I'll do, Jean, I'll, I'll forward to you some more specifics that we used at the school level to identify, on both ends, the mentors and the mentees.
Okay, thank you.
But this, this is something that we really. But this, this is something that we really value, and, you know, we wanna continue that tradition because we definitely think it has a positive impact for our students.
Any other questions on a motion? There being that call, board, please.
Ms. LaRusso.
Yes.
Mr. Ramachandran. Ms. Lans.
Yes.
Ms. Murphy.
Yes, abstain from A.
Mr. Fuentes. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
Abstain from A, yes to everything else.
That was abstain on A?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes, yes. Ms. Brazoli.
Yes.
Mr. Weeks.
Yes.
Mr. Laberty.
Yes.
We are done with the regular business. There's no need for a second exec session, so, twelve, we'll be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.